Okay, it's 5:30. I'll officially call the March regular school board meeting to order. For role calls, please note that Director Sand is joining us virtually. Thanks for joining, Carol. Can we do a quick sound check? You're muted still.
Yeah. Yes. Are we good? Happy to be here. Cindy, I cannot hear you. Is there anyone talking right now? I cannot hear any audio right now.
Yeah, Aaron's.
Yeah, and I'm looking at our microphone and it appears that we are not muted.
Now, it's fine now. It was just a few moments ago. Maybe no one was talking, but.
It sounds like Aaron was reading the mission and vision statement.
Okay, sorry, Aaron.
So we'll ask him to speak.
Picking up where you left off.
The mission of the Decor Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision of the Decor Community School District is Decor Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization, empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Thank you. Seeing there is no old business on our agenda for the evening, I will ask for, or accept a motion for an approval of the agenda. And noting, I'm gonna interrupt you around and take that away for a sec. We do have a scheduled attendee for our closed session, so to be mindful of that schedule. We had talked about scheduling that at 6:30 in case other items went long.
Yeah, yeah. I would say approve the agenda with the caveat that our goal is to go into closed session at or around 6:30. So if the other agenda items take a little bit longer, we might just say we're gonna move item K up the agenda so that we can kind of meet a 6:30, 6:35 time trend. So I don't know how you put that into a motion exactly.
What you said. Okay.
All right, that works.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, subject to possible alteration to accommodate the closed session at 6:30 PM.
Second. Okay, hearing a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we will approve consent items in minutes from the February 10th meeting, those in person. So take a look at those.
A question for you, Tim. Ms. Moesbach, is that resignation for the end of the year or?
Yeah, end of the year.
That's what I assumed, but.
Note that there are two that need to be segregated out for myself and my wife being speech judges. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve all of the agenda items with the exception of Activity Fund number 23 and 24.
I'll second the motion to approve the listed items, the exceptions of numbers 23 and 24.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I'll make them.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Got it ahead of myself. I'll make a motion that we approve items number 23 and 24 from the Activity Fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same. Oppose, same sign. And abstain. Motion carries. Next, we'll have open forum, which is communication from the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? That's here. Okay, everyone's looking at their feet, so we'll move on. Next, we'll have a presentation from the Guidance and School Counseling Team. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm gonna introduce Bridget Starhoff. I'm gonna start speaking and I wonder, is it, is it, is guidance and school counseling the official title of this presentation, or is it more than that?
It's Guidance and School Counseling.
Okay.
Where would you like us to stand?
You can, the camera will pick you up anywhere, so you can stand wherever you're.
There's no hole to hide behind it anymore.
Well, thanks for having us. We're really excited to share with you tonight, like what we're passionate about and what we do to support our students, also the adults in our school district, and then our school district general. So a little bit about school counseling, just to start. School counselors design and deliver school counseling programs that improve student outcomes. We lead and we advocate. We collaborate to promote equity and access for all students by connecting our programs to the district's academic mission and school improvement plan. As school counselors, we uphold the ethical and professional standards of the American School Counseling Association. And we use the Aspen National Model when we design our programs. And the four parts to that model are define, deliver, manage, and assess. Just a little kind of a fun fact, I think when most of us were going to school, our counselors were called guidance counselors. And that is because the profession actually started as vocational guidance in schools, and that has shifted quite a bit. And in 2001, federal legislation acknowledges that shift, and so we are really called school counselors now, as opposed to just guidance counselors. And so our group meets twice a month together, and we have some PLC goals. When we're not meeting together, then we're meeting with other groups within the district. For example, Pat and myself will meet with the CTUT at the high school to discuss career and academic planning, and then to work with the needs of the CTUT. And then our other counselors work with other PLCs those other two weeks. But some of our goals as a PLC, it's really important for us to do professional and personal check-ins with each other. And then we review academic and SEO data to drive our decision-making and our program development. We have a lot of shared families, and so we have a lot of shared discussions. We do some community resource awareness, and so this year, we've been bringing in different community resources to our meetings so we can learn a little bit more about what is out there, so when it's time for us to refer, we have the correct information. And then we help transition our students from building to building. And then we do some curriculum planning and sharing ideas on another.
Amanda. Okay, well, I'm the elementary part, so it's gonna look a little different. A little bit more wobbly. Well, I do the TK through, sometimes preschool, they need me through second grade, school counseling. And so one of my curriculums, one of the main goals of elementary school counseling is emotion identification and regulation. Like that's like the frowning piece, solid piece to have as they go up. So this is just a little song, and can you play like 10 seconds of it? Because I only got two minutes. So this is one of the curriculums, this is the curriculum we use for emotional identification. So anyway, we do a motion check-in throughout the school. This is a school-wide tier one program where they can go in and, and so if they're out at recess, they can say, I'm feeling blue, or, and all those staff knows what that means. Because it's a lot easier for those age levels to do a color rather than a feeling word. So it's pretty, it's really working out well, and it also be sizes. So like, I'm feeling really, my side spot's really big, you know, or, and it's, you know, getting smaller. So it's a really good program that way. So that's my main thing that I teach school-wide and in my, in my class. See if you want to flip to the next slide. So here's kind of my areas of, uh, it's hard to break down your job, as you all know, because we all have complex jobs, but I'm gonna go large groups, so I do a whole class instruction within a special schedule, K-2, 30-minute classes. The curriculum I use is the little spots and second step. And the units I do are bully prevention, emotional regulation, emotional recognition, empathy, kindness, problem-solving, friendship skills, beginning of career awareness, and safety are my main, are my main lessons that I teach to all classes. And that gives me a chance to interact with 100% of the population of our school, so I see all kids. Individual small group, this is the other part of my job. So I do do TK through individual support, usually they're 20 to 30 minute sessions. They have a range of topics, friendship, family situations, focus, behaviors, emotional regulation again. Relationship building, I do a lot of check-ins with kids in the morning or at the end of the day, like a 15-minute, how you doing? Build a relationship, be that one person in the building that kids can come to. So they're, they have, they feel comfortable coming to me when they really need it. So that is a super big part of my job. And then I also do small groups, they're usually six-week sessions, about 25 minutes. And they're based on a topic, maybe like you have a class that has a, you know, five students that are working, that have friendship issues. Instead of pulling them one at a time, I do a friendship group, and they come, they get pulled out for that. Sabers, I do do a sabers group. If these have, second grade had a larger percent of sabers students in second grade. So I did a second sabers group related to the at-risk or risk factor they had. Divorce, death, and I also do lunch groups. And then support-wise, PBIS, I'm on the PBIS team, which is our tier-one intervention for positive behavior systems. MTSS, which is where we identify maybe kids are in the bubble or at risk or need some extra support behaviorally. So we meet as a team every two weeks and discuss kids, bring them to the table, what plan can we put in place? How can we support teachers? How can we support that student? I also helped teacher support, like creating calm down corners. I got this tier ones, my big things, I love the tier one identification system across the school. And then strategies to go in like with little charts or different strategy that help kids in the classroom. I do school-wide initiatives. I feel, I believe bully prevention is super important, I start the year out with that. And then we have a week to celebrate that. It's, you know, and it's about accepting others. You know, basically is what it comes down to. What do you do if someone's being bullied? Beginning of that. And then I also do kindness week, and then I also do PBIS. Otis the gnome is my character. I don't know if you know Otis. Does anyone know Otis? Oh, you don't know Otis. Okay, can you click on this and kind of scroll? This is my kindness week. I do Otis. Scroll more, scroll more, all the way. This is my videos I put out for all the weeks. They all have a video with a theme. Ours was grow friendship this year for kindness week. And you have to kind of go, there's Otis. Okay, so he does a message to the kids, and it's on a theme, and a lot of Norwegian connections there. That, so that's Otis. And then if you go back to my screen, I assist with IEPs and Bible course, parent communication support, and then outside referral systems, first families who need occupational therapy, outside counseling, maybe a referral to maybe some screenings, you know, that type of thing. So that is my job in a nutshell. And I absolutely love it. And that layers through the hallways. So does anyone have any questions for me, or can you do that here? Can there be questions?
Yeah, we could have questions, sure.
Yeah, I'm curious, like, how do you possibly meet with each individual kid? That's so many kids, and like, to build, to have a goal to build a relationship with each of them, that's incredible.
Well, no, I mean, I try to, I meet with them through class, and then I do a lot of like group lunch groups.
Yeah.
And then through MTSS is where the check-ins come in, you know. So, but I really like to form that connection. I mean, that's so imperative to my job, is the connection with kids.
I just love, I just love that spot. And the color coding, I think that is just very important, and it must be just really effective for the kids to be able to refer to colors.
Yeah, and it's based off psychological coloring that they use, like in even advertisement. So it's like a research-based color coding system. So if they were becoming to go advertising or something, maybe have the same type of colors. It's a good program. Right, thank you.
Hello, I'll be representing Carrie Lee today. Hello, everybody. So I, a couple of different parts that I kind of set up my day, kind of similar to Amanda there. A couple of different parts throughout my day. I teach life skills to all students as well. So another nice way to get a chance to build rapport with all of the students that come through our door every, every day, and, and similar topics, I guess. Utilizing random acts of kindness, overcoming obstacles, mindful schools is one that I really like to kind of use. Along with mindful schools, the top curriculum that I use there is Calm Connect. It's a, it's a mind-to-body connection. So a lot of my third graders come in right after recess. So as you can tell, that that would probably be a perfect time to utilize that mind-to-body connection to kind of get us calmed down before the natural instruction throughout the day. So that's been something that all of our students have really enjoyed as well. And I have zones of regulation up there, but also we do recognize the little spot as well, just to continue that conversation from the elementary school to, or the other elementary school. So from, from John Klein to Carrie Lee, so that's something, just wanting to keep that communication, that identification of emotions. But then also, along with that, our PBIS team also utilizes zones of regulation as well to kind of recognize the emotions and then the zones of regulation. How do we kind of work through some of those feelings and what's our next step type of thing? And so, yes, I'll teach, I teach two 30-minute classes. Week, excuse me, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. And then I teach a third and a fourth grade class in those days. As far as student, student support, I meet with students as needed, I guess, as well through the MTSS program, system that we've kind of discussed up here earlier. As a referral system, students are referred by teachers and kind of discussing different situations that might be barriers to their education or barriers to some of their self-regulation, and figuring out ways that we can go ahead and make some accommodations or support them. I think that that's definitely something that helps support or bring those students to me. Also self-referrals or parents also just kind of reaching out and talking about some specific needs of their students. And so similar topics that'll probably come up in all of ours, friendship, family resources, situations, trauma support, distress tolerance skills, mindfulness, emotional regulation, and growth mindset. Also through that MTSS, and some of our conversations, we'll do kind of some check-in, check-out systems with the students. A lot of that has come lately through the restorative circles that, so a teacher might be having a particular issue within the classroom or some friendship issue within, with amongst of certain students. So what we'll do at that point in time is just bring everybody together, have a conversation, and kind of talk about ways in which such and so-and-so may have felt hurt by another person, and maybe how we could kind of remedy that problem, a problem or situation. And so that usually will let us know whether we need to have an ongoing meeting with that and kind of form some of those small groups that Amanda had talked about. Or is that something that, you know, we were able to solve here and then just kind of do some check-ins based off of that? And then also, we talked about sabers and identifying some of the students that might need some outgoing outside support as well. We've worked with family, or not families, excuse me, helping services to kind of, to build, there's a, excuse me, curriculum-based support group that comes in and teaches a six-week lesson based off of some students that have been identified as being maybe at risk in some certain areas. And then family and support and staff. So I, biking in the spotlight is something that we started, I think in the years past, they might have done based off of earning, earning your spotlight in some sort of way, but I think this year, we've been focused on making sure every student has kind of representation in the school, so they can feel like that they've been a part of the spotlight in the school. So that's been something that we've been enjoying on Wednesdays, also part of this by a simple ease. And we like to mirror those with what Amanda's doing and John Klein as well. And then also, I guess, partnering with the communities, organizational mental health partners, and then having those. So I worked as a social worker in the community for many years, so I do have some prior knowledge in working with some of those groups, figuring out if certain students might. working with some of those groups, um, figuring out if certain students might, um, qualify for integrated health homes, um, through some of our, our insurance base, or excuse me, some of our home and health-based services, um, that, that are offered throughout the state. And to see if some of our students might be able to work, be eligible for those things. Or if not, maybe where are some other people within the community that they might be able to get connected with? And so, yes, and I think I, I talked about here. Um, I guess I haven't talked about here, but, um, I know that they eliminated the, uh, the, um, school counselors association and then kind of how they had to follow. I also follow the, the castle framework, so, um, there's self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making skill are kind of the focus, so. Yes, any questions?
I, I want to point out that Matt's, uh, position is funded by the therapeutic school grant, so it's kind of reminder to the board. Um, and then you're, you're a school social worker. Slightly different than a professional school counselor, so then you kind of serve as needed. We might call on you if there's a specific social work I need at the middle school, high school.
Yeah, and so I think, um, Shanna has utilized that a couple of different times. There's been some, some, so as far as the most recent question was dental insurance and trying to navigate that and figuring those things out right now. So that I might have a little bit of expertise in, in being able to maybe figure out who to call or, or what is the current policy because it, it's all ever-changing, but and, and who's kind of insured and who's not. So, yeah, I bring some of that to the table as well.
That's wonderful. That's a wonderful asset to have in the district.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I think Amanda hit it on the head, building rapport and meeting with, and getting to know each and every student and and making sure that they have that representation, why I think is the change for the Viking in the spotlight. I think that's definitely my number one priority coming into the school every day is making those connections.
Great.
Very good.
Thanks for letting me.
Thank you all.
I just want to break the ice right away. There will be no singing, dancing, no talk to you with me on the morning guide. I'm Lee Sock, I'm the school counselor in middle school five through eight. Um, guys, classes I teach two periods a day out of an eight-period day. Um, gives up a lot of time, but, uh, as, as Matt and Amanda both said, that's where the kids all get to know me. I have every single kid. Um, about one-fifth of the school year and that's where I build my relationships and get to know them. Uh, individual counseling, I won't go into that. We've, we've covered that. We all deal with a myriad of issues. I will say, um, when I started my career, I was a high school counselor, dropout prevention counselor in Southeast Polk Schools and I think arrogantly at that time thought, oh, we have the big problems in the high school. The kids in kindergarten are dealing with the same issues. It's just we're catching them early. Uh, early intervention is huge, so hats off to Amanda and Matt for what they do at that, at those levels too. Uh, do group counseling like, uh, in the other buildings. Uh, help run the mentor class, which is, uh, I'm in the classroom just a little bit uh, for about a week, week and a half, and then the eighth graders are placed into the third, fourth and fifth grade classrooms. Uh, wonderful program. I love it. Uh, some kids have gone on to be interested in being teachers in, in the future through that and through their experiences. Uh, Decor Defenders is a leadership group like a student council, uh, so we do all kinds of activities and things with that. Uh, huge part of our job is communication with teachers, parents, administrators. Trying to make sure all the, everything is boiled well and, and running well uh, within the school, being a voice for those students with teachers communicating with, uh, parents and administrators. I think a huge, when I, again, when I was a young counselor, I think I came in thinking, I'm going to be the therapist, I'm going to help all of them. I can do it all. And, uh, quickly found out that outside referrals are one of our biggest things that we do. Helping match up families with resources so that they can, they can get the time. We don't have the time to be a, a weekly therapist. But we're doing check-ins, we're building those relationships, but we're referring on those bigger issues too. Uh, research, recent research has shown that in the, in the last ten years, a big increase in depression, anxiety and mental health issues. And I just want to throw that in there that we're seeing it on the ground. Um, if, if you're not seeing it, it is happening. Um, since I came to Decor, I think sometimes we're, we're good at saying, our kids don't have, you know, we're doing great. Everything's great here. We're doing well. Um, but these problems, our kids are really good at hiding their problems, really good at pretending to fit in. Um, but they're dealing with a lot of things that kids are nationwide. Uh, in the last, uh, sorry. Oh, in this year, I've witnessed, uh, big, in the middle school, a big increase in hospitalizations, mainly for suicide attempts, suicidal ideations. Um, also for eating disorders. So we're seeing an increase in that here in Decor. And I'm sure the high school would back that up with, uh, with their experience too. Uh, in the last month, I just went back over my, uh, my schedule for the last month and I just in, just focusing on three issues. I'm not going to go through them all. Uh, eleven students, eleven separate students, not eleven incidences of the same student. Eleven different students in the last month dealing with suicidal ideations. Uh, fifteen separate students, uh, dealing with domestic issues from divor-, uh, divorce to domestic violence and an array of other things. And then twelve, uh, dealing with anxiety. So those are students that obviously take up a little more of our time and they need more of our time. Um, also do scheduling on Power School, uh, do all the scheduling as far as putting it in. Um, Justin does all the schedule, puts it together and then I put it into the Power School program. Uh, career planning is a big focus about midway through the year for eighth graders. And then Viking success meetings, uh, are working with mainly nine, us meeting with, uh, talking about non-IEP students, making sure, uh, that, that they're, we're, nobody's falling through the crack. We're making sure that they're getting the help they need. Um, so that's in a nutshell. Any of us, I would love to have more of a conversation if you have time, anytime. We'd love to answer more things. Any questions right now?
I'm shocked at the stats that you just shared with us.
Yeah, it's, it's eye-opening and, and again, kindergarten through twelve, uh, kids are dealing with some of the same issues. And the earlier we can identify and work with that, the, the better off those kids are. So we appreciate your time.
I'd like to just say as a teacher that, to thank all the counselors because as a teacher, it's so important to know that we have effective people who have relationships already with these students. And if we make a referral, we can depend on them, that they will absolutely follow through and, um, and help these students and so that we can really focus on, on, uh, on teaching and and focus on, um, academics and really caring for the students. So I really, really want to thank all these counselors for their excellent work.
So with the high school, I'm, uh, Bridget gave the first couple of slides and she said, please go ahead and give this slide and go through the things that we do. Um, I do want to thank all of you, especially it starts with Mr. Hurst and then goes to the board and goes to the superintendent uh, for the idea. Uh, Mr. Panko, wonderful person, loving to death, great friend of mine. Adding another counselor has allowed us to do some more things. Um, really get, uh, more individual counseling into the system though too. Um, but we then also have to take over most of Mr. Panko's responsibilities, dividing between us. Uh, Denise is doing some of those responsibilities too, uh, but we share some of that. The, you know, there's a long, long list here and this doesn't hit everything of what we do in the high school. So you can read through a lot of that yourself. Uh, we like to spend as much time as we can doing individual counseling. Um, certainly the personal, social, emotional, but also a lot of academic and career counseling. So we, if we were to add something from the middle school plate to the high school plate, that's where we spend a lot of our time, um, also helping to create the schedule. Um, selling classes to kids like, hey, consider this, consider this, consider this. Um, and then if you were to add more of the testing, we know we have the MAPS tests and ISAS tests. Uh, but also we have AP in the high school. We have work to do with ACTs, not a lot, but PSAT, MSQ, um, QT. And then, um, obviously scholarships, transcripts, those are things that, um, middle school and elementary don't have as much time to um, that they spend time with. Uh, we spend quite a bit of time with class registration and schedule changes because we want everybody scheduled to be just right. So that they are getting the best education that they can. We offer a lot in Decor. We, we offer for a school our size. It's huge, it's wonderful, and we try to offer things that fit every person. Um, everything in the CT department, college credits all around, AP classes all around. And every year it gets, uh, tweaked as we see fit and the, the teachers see fit and families uh, refer back to us, but that, that will take some time. And you just go through the rest of the list, things that you don't often think about, NCL eligibility, uh, type requirements. Uh, a big thing that's really come our way is district career and academic planning, uh, work-based learning type things. That, uh, is primarily, that's one of the tasks that I spend quite a bit of time with. But also Mandy Putnam is spending quite a bit of time helping us and we appreciate her coming on board with that as well. Um, you know, it, it's a long list, very similar to some of the goals of the other uh, levels, but we don't have in-class time, uh, like we don't have a dedicated class, but we do go into classes. Uh, we'll each speak in health classes on some particular topics. We'll go in and talk about classes and registration. Um, and then lots of consultation time, lots of emails, talking with parents, talking with, um, teachers, talking with students, sometimes talking with doctors or therapists. Um, so that, that's where we spend a, a large amount of our time. I don't want to, you know, we could go into each of these things and spend twenty minutes on each topic. But I, I think you get the gist of everything that we do in high school. Uh, it's a busy time, it's a good time. We do good work. Probably the biggest thing that I want to emphasize is we are a team. Not just Bridget and I as a team and not just the counseling department as a team, but people like Casey Nickel and Adam Riley and Denise Goldrude and Brad Hurst, who are, we're a team and it takes a lot of communication. Uh, sometimes we bug each other with communication. I think we do a pretty good job. I'm in Brad's office bugging him all the time. Um, hopefully he can handle some of that, but, and I also want to thank, have to be here, I have to thank Kathy because I'm trying to do my job with all the, the PIC classes and things like that and, uh, a little inefficient to start with. It's gotten a lot better, but I know she had to work with Jim and I didn't realize how much work it was to, to do that one role. So Kathy's been great, very patient with me. So I have to get a shout out for that. So, um, does anybody have any questions about high school, high school activities and counseling?
I just want to take a second just to kind of reiterate. You talked a little bit about the beginning. So, uh, we had a couple retirements and, and I'd love to take the credit for it, but I really should, uh, give that to Brad, just kind of looking at what the needs were. And so that's when we came with, okay, we don't need a registrar, but we also had a dean of students. And so Brad really came up with the idea to restructure the, the office area where let's add a professional, another professional school counselor and, and student assistant. So we replaced two people with two people and so the FTE was the same, but we maybe added some extra responsibilities, took away some duties. And, you know, I know one of the things that was really easy sell was by having two school counselors and then having a gender balance made us feel good as well.
It was, it was an excellent move.
It was. Tremendous. And we hired tremendous people, you know, um, Andy Carlson and Mr. Uh, Rolinger's role was, he's doing great work with five oh fours and his office work, but Hugo and Casey. You know, that was a home run, hit a grand slam there. Um, Bridget, awesome as well. And so we got really good people. They're really hardworking and, um, we'd love you to visit sometime and uh, see what we do. So we appreciate all your support and, uh, um, we, we've got a great system, great school. Um, there's always more work to do, but we super appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, what an incredible presentation. And I encourage the board members, I know that we've taken some time with their presentation, but if you have other follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to each of them by email. I find they're a very responsive team. So thank you to, to the emails that you've responded to for me. Um, okay, next on the agenda, we'll dig into new business. Um, the first item under new business is approval of the AEA food service purchasing agreement.
That's just a standard, uh, every year kind of thing where we use the AEA to help us purchase, uh, food items. So I recommend we approve it.
I will make the motion to approve the AEA food purchasing.
All second.
Okay, hearing the motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we will set a date for public hearing for the school budget. And that is proposed for Monday, March twenty-fourth at noon.
Uh, yes, we had set these two before, but we, we, uh, we need to make sure we have the right date down. So it is Monday, March twenty-fourth. And it is at noon.
Correct. And that was an error that was not caught on our last approval.
So it just as a reminder, we have two, we have two public hearing dates. We'll have the, the twenty-fourth and then we'll have the final one at a regular meeting on, I think it's April fourteenth, whatever that Monday is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we'll, since they're separate items, we'll approve them separately. So for the first, we'll just approve the public hearing with the correct time and date.
Make a motion to set the first public hearing on the budget for Monday, March twenty-fourth at noon.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And following, um, we will set the date for the public, the second date for the public hearing, which would be during our regular meeting on Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
We've already, that's approved. The item C on the agenda is to set the public hearing for the roof project.
Oh, excuse me. Yes.
And so the important thing is, since we already have a, a public hearing on the school budget at five thirty, this public hearing for the roof will be immediately following that. So we put down five thirty, but we probably should correct it. So it just says immediately following the five thirty public hearing. Yeah, so, so the public hearing is part of the, the reminder of the roof project. It's, uh, the getting rid of the armor light roof above the cafeteria at the Cora High School. And then the, um, gymnasium at Carrie Lee are the two roofs that we're going to bid. So, um, we're having a public hearing just to review the plans and that project, um, on April twenty-fourth that will follow the budget hearing that night.
And just to clarify, at our February meeting, we had set the April fourteenth date. So we're not reapproving that because that was already approved correctly with the correct time and date.
One correct, one incorrect.
So, but in a public hearing for the Decor High School in Carrie Lee Elementary roofs. And I also want to just add in that I'm thrilled that we are keeping up with maintenance on our roofs and keep taking good care of our buildings.
So we need a motion for this one?
We do.
I'll make the motion to set, approve the public hearing date following the school budget, public hearing date on April fourteenth.
All second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next, item D is approval of termination of agreement with P, with PFM to provide um, municipal advisory services.
And so item D and E are kind of joined together. Uh, D is, uh, terminating the agreement with PFM who provides us, who has provided us municipal advisory services in the past, which is, uh, your bond issue services. And so then, uh, after D, then we could move to E where we, uh, approve the agreements to work with Piper Sandler. Piper Sandler for financial services. But, but item D is just to recommend the termination of the contract with PFM.
Which we should probably clarify, public finance and management.
I looked and tried to find their, their acronym. Their website doesn't have it anywhere.
Really?
No, well. I'd like the five minutes I invested in it, Ron. I should have just called you.
Well, and, um, just to give a little bit of background, we're moving into a really complex time in Iowa public school history. Just to say it very politely, um, and we had Travis um, from Piper Sandler with us in January. I know that Tim has met with him and talked with him multiple times. Um, Piper Sandler really specializes in school district finance. I feel like now is a more, there's never been a more important time and, um, so that's why we're that's why that, this is recommended.
I'll make the motion to approve the termination of services for PFM.
All second then.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, included in the, right up here, it says, I don't know if the district were responsible for outstanding keys. Do we know what some of this roughly look like?
We don't know what those look like. We're, we're waiting. Uh, we've given them a notification of We don't know what those look like, we're waiting, uh we've given them a notification of termination, uh but we are, you know, obviously. They have provided a few services for us, so we do anticipate that bill coming. Ballpark or rough number, I don't have a rough.
Probably not talking about millions.
There's annual report that they do every year for us, that's two thousand dollars, so I would assume that might give up three or four. I I don't think he wanted that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, we'll continue with, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And item E, approval, approve agreements with Piper Sandler for financial services.
And there's three different uh agreements here, the first one is just to kind of. Do that financial advising to work with the G O bonds and to structure those and to go out and sell those. Um the second one uh has them kind of uh. I uh they do the secondary market disclosure, which is a report that Kathy needs for the Emma. Um and then third one allows them, if we do in the future, go to any kind of. Uh save or pebble uh borrowing, where we would borrow against that future. Revenue, they would be, they could be our loan placement agent or underwriter on that for potential future loans. So this would set us up for doing all our financial stuff with Piper and and. Helping us as we guide down the path, we could do them individually, or we're happy to do them all as one.
I do have one question on the G uh the G O bonds, will they work? Um with uh Myron's uh directly, or will they work through us, or how what's the process for how that works?
Yeah, so so what they need to know, so the 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 as as Cindy kind of spoke about. They're, one of the things at Piper Sandler, they work with a lot of school districts, and they're the uh they're the ones that uh. Work with the financial planners and have the five-year financial model, and embedded in that is not only how to, you know. Make sure that you keep your solvency ratio and your U I B healthy, but you can uh do your tax rate. And so we have, with the school bond passing, we've got the the promise on the the taxpayers for the increase on eighty-six cents. And so they can structure our debt to make sure that we meet that. Now, we we've already had a meeting where Pike, where Travis from Piper Sandler attended. With Myron, and what they what they needed was the draw schedule. Because year one, how much money are we gonna need? Year two, how much are we gonna need? You know, obviously you'll need it all by year three, but you don't have to borrow. We're we're we'll do that thirty-eight million dollar probably in two loans. We'll probably do a seventeen million dollar uh loan and then a twenty-one million dollar loan for those two things, just to spread that out a little bit and make that easier. And of course, you know, there's one thing, the other part is just kind of reading what the rates are and kind of timing that and being a little strategic with that as well. But yeah, they, so to I the 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 shorter answer would have been say, yes, they they'll work with Myron and make sure that we have the money to pay for the project when we need it.
Okay, thank you.
I would move that we approve the three uh separate uh contracts with uh Piper Sandler.
And I'll second.
And um as as a question, Darlene, are you okay with us approving all three at once?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions after the motion and second? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next item is a conditional approval of service leave absence.
Uh so we have a request from a staff member to take a service leave, service leave, uh probably more people would think of that as a like a. Uh sabbatical, um and in a as a college term, so this is a staff member. We have the service leave language there in our master contract that I copied, so you can kind of see what what we allow. Uh or permit, and the big caveat, the reason this is conditional is that it's upon us finding a suitable replacement. So board approves it tonight, uh we get it posted, we get we get a suitable replacement, then we'll come back and we'll say, all right, we got this replacement. We'll, so we've approved it conditionally, and then we'll just do a final condition approval after we find that replacement.
Okay.
And this replacement will be a one, a one-year contract, is that correct?
Yeah, they would be issued, they they'd be issued a one-year contract uh because the person has the ability to return. Under the the service le- leave language.
And I don't, I don't know if I recall a request like this being made during my years in the board so far, Ron, do you have any historical perspective on? How frequent requests like this are in the district?
Hmm, this is maybe the third or fourth in.
Right now, Jennifer Larson is on leave of absence.
Okay.
Yeah, trying to think of um.
Megan Gates was here, right, or was it no last year's, whatever.
Sarah Carlson did.
The geometry teacher, whose name I can't recall right now.
Okay, so yeah.
Aaron Gerst.
Yes.
How many years has Adam Bohach been employed by the district? The reason for my question would be, yeah, uh but according to the service leave part of the master contract, if he has ten years, he can use. To do two, we're only saying one in here, but how would that function if? He's applying for one, does he have to reapply for the second? That's kind of the question I'm asking for, could this end up being longer than just one?
In the past, uh Aaron Gerst was in that position and at at the. Near the end of the first year, reapplied for a second year.
I'll make the motion to approve. The leave of absence. The. Conditional service or leave of absence.
I'll second the motion for to conditionally approve the leave of absence, this is service leave absence.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Um, okay, item G is approval of elementary school project increase in scope.
Um so uh item G is about the elementary school project. It's a thirty-eight million dollar project with the construction manager at risk, will be guaranteed at thirty-eight million dollars. Um I've asked Nick to explore the option of, uh well, I guess in with the admin team a little bit as well. Uh the gymnasium that was gonna be built there or that is designed to be built there, asking it to to be bigger, the. The components that I felt that we should explore were um having it so that. It was big enough so that uh we could use it for high school and middle school type events. But also, any any space that we put into an elementary school, as a former elementary school principal, I knew that that could be used. And so uh for me, like um I see this space as big enough with, if we could put a curtain down and we're doing indoor recess. Then you could have enough space on the other side to run other classes in there, um as I was thinking about this, coming from two districts. That were smaller, but we had like, you know, in a in a K twelve district, we had, we had two gyms at Central Philly in Dunkerton. And they would get used a lot during the winter and during the rainy season or indoor recess and just opportunities to um. Go around and and do stuff, uh the uh, so ask Nick to to draw that out. Myron, as our construction manager at risk, um has suggested that it would be about a two-point-three to three-point-one million dollar cost. Uh add-on, um and so. Well, as I shared with the board in my notes, we've we've kind of built back up our pebble and save fund. Uh by not spending quite as much, uh and a lot of the things that we spend, pebble and save are based around the activities. So we've got that fund built back up to over five million dollars, um which would, we have, we'll pay for this upgrade with cash. Um and we have actually restricted some spending for next year so that we might even finish next year with another million dollars kind of in the bank for this project. Or for other projects, um I know we're looking at the sustainability and energy uh upgrades for that. Um this wouldn't tap out every amount of money the district has, because there. There would still be the ability to borrow against pebble and save, which that was like a nine million dollar figure. So there's 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 money to add more to this project as the board sees fit. I'll take a break now, I know I've got my activities directors here, uh and I think they're eager to share the benefits that they see. I tried to share the benefits from the elementary perspective of, if I had a gym big enough, I know I would use it for for indoor recess, I mean, I could have a. Uh P class going on and an indoor recess, or at least, you know, rotate through, maybe you don't have two grade levels, maybe you have a smaller version, but. You know, you think about wintertime and not getting outside, having the ability to run around with children, um and have some exercises. Is uh a benefit, uh a gym with bleachers uh allows me, would allow the district to have more. Elementary assemblies and more gatherings that are more uh just easier to manage, uh I've had, I've worked in schools where we've had gyms. We have just the children sat on the floor and also bleachers, and I could tell you, they do sit better when they've got a seat on, yeah. But I'll take a pause and turn it over to Mr. Riley, maybe talk a little bit about what what this potentially. Uh could help for the high school, I think one of the things that Adam said to me earlier was. This is an opportunity that we don't, it's not gonna come around very often, this might be once a fifty-year opportunity, which I. Appreciated that comment.
Yeah, just just from experiences, it's it's rare when you have opportunities that come along, and just like when anybody builds something, they always wish that they had. Something a little bit more, and I think having this discussion, knowing um that this board, Dr. Proman, has done a good job. Keeping a good uh fair amount of resources in our in our pebble safe and a one percent uh to to even have this discussion, I think is. Is awesome, uh cause it that doesn't always happen in a lot of other settings, but um there is one thing that is certain. Uh in terms of my role, and I know Jake can speak to it too, is the pressures on. Usage of indoor community recreation space within this community are profound. And any opportunity that we have to create more space, um if I show you our facility scheduler that we use over the course of. The winter months and the seasons where we need indoor, uh adding another gym and adding another gym that is sizable. Uh would have an extreme impact, a positive impact upon not only our students, uh but obviously our community as whole. Um within that, Tim alluded to how it's gonna benefit, I think it's really the women's situation, when it does come time to manage practices and events in relation to. What Jake has to offer in the high school by adding on another sizable gym that has a third month space. It helps us not only for practices, but as we choose which gym that we would host and or both gyms that we would host and or. All four gyms on any given night, uh what it can do to offer some adaptability in the schedule makes a huge difference, cause for example. There are some nights that we have snow outs, or even when we look at the schedule and Jake and I have to be like, well, something's gonna have to give on that night, we're not gonna be able to have space. And try to be able to balance that out, by adding another one on, we can keep a flow and schedule for our kids, um and then obviously the morning and evening pieces. Um are a big deal, take for example, if we know we can bring the practice gym um offline and we use both gyms. Uh that that are of sizable space and appropriate space, right now we're short on space for our wrestling room, uh and we do use our practice gym for wrestling practices. When we can have both the boys and girls practicing at the same time, well, that completely changes the dynamic of how we schedule practices in that regard. Just while while still hosting competitions um on that other thing, so um this would be. You know, in a fifty-year run for a price tag, that you know, that's not going to add in terms of more of the the property tax side of things, to use couple saves, exactly what couple saves designed to do.
And um you talked, being the parent of two high school students right now. And dropping one of my student or one of my children off at six A M the Monday morning, right after the time change. Because for a practice, because there's not room after school, um I think that families in the community feel the scarcity of space. Um so many of our students are gone from five forty-five in the morning until nine o'clock at night, and that has a huge effect on everything. So I'm hoping that. By supporting the system with another indoor space could also support schedules. Sleep, revenue, I mean, to have another. Spaced for an event that would charge entry fees like a high school, I mean, I just think that there's a lot of positive things to consider.
And I think another factor which you wouldn't think of, but given what's been going on and is continuing with our uh. Conference realignment scenarios, if we can have. Two facilities so that we have multiple games going on at once, when we have somebody driving. Two and a half hours to get here, will certainly get everybody in and out faster and uh. Eliminate the need to begin at three o'clock and be playing your last varsity game at eight thirty, so um. That's uh an invaluable thing, wouldn't have been a factor in in years past, but we're not driving twenty miles for games anymore. And people aren't coming to us from twenty miles away, they're coming from a hundred miles away.
I agree, and I also had the same thought you mentioned on the wrestling, I mean, we added another sport here a few years ago. And um utilizing that for practice space, I know what the schedules are mornings. Rotating around basketball games, I mean, having a another space to, I think. When you're building it, you you have to do it right.
So with the concept of building a separate, we'll call it competition gym, what's the size of our current high school gym? So roughly fifteen hundred square feet. Um, so it's one sixty-five by ninety-four. Whatever that.
We see like fifteen hundred gray.
So the proposed expansion would be smaller than the current high school gym. As far as seating capacity and square footage, roughly.
Um Tim and I participate in meetings every other week with our architect and construction manager at risk. And the original gym that was, the the final footprint of the building is yet to come, so this is an important. Decision that we as a board need to make before that final footprint can be determined and final cost estimates, I know that from. Original concept drawings, um originally, a gymnasium. Was designed that had seating only on one side, which. I remembered sitting in middle school events and having like as many, I don't know. That, to me, that gym just is not big enough for what we need at the middle school level, and I just don't want us to. Miss this opportunity or to put a a too small.
And I would say.
Gym in again.
Obviously, there's the initial footprint of where that is, um I can say, this will now be the third gym that I've had some involvement in terms of uh. Being a part of within this, I think there's some things that we we'd have a pretty good idea and find to know when it works. And relation to when how we're using this basis and we're running the program.
And we have room at this site, I mean, anyone that's been to events at our middle school and high school know the. The challenges or the limited space that we have on those properties, so I think that both, you know, projects did the best they could with the space they had, absolutely, that this. We have a little more room.
With the concept of these quad nights, who would you propose to play in the separate gym? Depends, uh there's clearly, you'd be very likely that you would have three games and one gym in one game and the other. Depending on what and how you can handle officials and what's available as well as uh the worker management. Um there are a few subtle surrounding districts that will have as many as five, when they have two gyms available. Games in the same night, so they go two in one and three in the other, um it it just kind of depends on what the other school has for numbers available. Um and and how and basketball works for each each district, um I can talk. Walcon does it a little bit differently than Waverly, and Trail City does it a little bit differently, just because of it. A lot of it really comes down to officials and what.
Hey, and and I might jump in, just coming from Dunkerton and Central City did a little different. Um but the Central City, the Tri-Rivers went to, starting the girls varsity at five and the boys JV. Uh at five and then flip. uh at five and then flip flopping. And I thought that was great in the sense of compacting the night and getting people in and out, and I think that could be appealing to people like Ron said. You're traveling two hours and you're like, well, we can go up there. We know one bus, you know, can come up at uh get them there, you know, four o'clock and you'll be done. Gosh, we would be walking out of the gym. Usually we start the varsity, the second game would usually start about six fifteen, get done about you know, seven thirty, eight o'clock at the latest, but there are also people who didn't like that because they were like, well, I want to go to the the boys JV and see a little bit of both. And so I think you work with the other other school on that, but the we had, we also had a staggered thing in Dunkerton where girls JV would start, boys JV would follow, while the boys JV would like a halftime, you'd start the girls varsity. So, but it 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 just gives you more options, and then we didn't even talk about if if a school wanted to do basketball and wrestling on the same night, we'd certainly be able to accommodate that as well.
So I think about this also from an equity standpoint of who plays in which facility and does that impact how many people are going to attend each relative sport? How much capacity do we really need for seating? So if we're gonna have, we're gonna take all of our kids from playing five games back to back to back to back to back, putting two here, three here, we're saying we're gonna split the crowd.
Not necessarily because we're not playing five games on the same night right now as it is.
Well, but.
Or and we're playing four on the same night that are in the same facility. Um, all of these settings, the only way that they do these, uh, if you're gonna end up using both is both settings have to be in close proximity. So I can use a, last year I go to a game down at Housen and uh they stagger the times so that by the time the varsity girls game starts, um, all of the ninth grade games, because we had two ninth grade games worked on. Um, so basically by the time that came out, everybody was in those locations and and that's ADs. Talk through that very much so, and sometimes the surprising piece that happens is, um, it's happened a few times where we flipped a varsity girls and a varsity boys basketball game, for example, uh, we we adjust our duels uh through the last two years according to which is going to be for the conference championship on the line. We're gonna play that at the second time uh if coaches want that. Because sometimes they don't change who their kids.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that runs through my mind, and I'm just stating it out loud, I'm not saying that's what would happen, but would be, I don't want to see the girls teams relegated to a smaller competition venue, seating venue versus the boys. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but I would be remiss for if I didn't say that that would be a possibility, that it could happen without mindful.
I could say in the years since squads have started, uh, the varsity boys and girls competition have always occurred in the same gym. I've never been in a situation where they're.
And also, if you're talking basketball, assuming you would have a little bit. This gym might be the preferred gym if we have a little more baseline room.
See how that goes, yeah.
You know, it might be where varsity is at the new gym and, I mean, that new one might be the preferred out of the two.
So this leads me to my next thought, which is about how many elementary schools have a preferred use gym, and I'm gonna frame it that way, that is the one where twelve hundred people are coming for a basketball game regularly? And what does that lead to for building and facility safety over the course of a lifespan for the district? So, thinking about public safety, we know that one of the easiest ways to keep the youngest learners safe is to keep people out of their buildings. Not to say we don't want people in their buildings, but we don't want to hold the large events where there's lots of people coming in on a daily basis and understanding where the pinch points are.
So, Aaron, that has come up in our meetings with our our architect and construction manager at risk. We talked a lot about safety. And the layout or the concept drawing right now would have the gym located near the commons, which is located near the front entrance that could be secure and locked from the the rest of the building or the the program use with the rest of the grades.
Yeah, you wouldn't walk into the building and just have free access like you do now to to the building. There would be a, it'd be the commons would be secured.
Right, and I have been to area gymnasiums, like for example in Charles City, their Comet Gym is built onto their middle school, and that is the premier varsity.
I think there's a difference between a middle school, though, and I came to an elementary school.
Well, one thing, I think the obvious thing that minimizes concerns in my mind is that the elementary kids are going home at three o'clock, three thirty. By the time this game happens at six o'clock, I don't have any concerns about safety because.
I'm not worried about the crossover between students. I'm worried about your fourteen year old, fifteen year old student who we were kind of talking about earlier this evening. How often are they coming into this building and being familiarized with where they might go, what they might do? And how are we creating a safe atmosphere when we're building our largest intended, not quite, not in terms of seating, but in terms of space? We're bringing the most people into a school on a regular basis where purpose of that building is to educate and teach four, five, six, seven year olds.
Given the campus, you know, I I consider that whole area to be a campus where we have right now, we have a lot of activity from early morning through late night right across the street. So I think that the uh just being in close proximity to our high school, that's already there. I don't share in your concern for safety with the with the locked, you know, area that is that would be for activities. I also.
A school now where you can wander down any hallway when she come in the comments area, you come in your comments and you're gonna be.
Right, I see this as an ideal location for this that could benefit both the students that are in the building and benefit the system. I think in Decorah, too, we need to be mindful of um, and this is separate from your safety concern, but we're really landlocked and we don't have the luxury of having a lot of options for really anything. Um, so I guess.
I I think we really need to look at the cost of what this looks like, how it impacts, because we're not looking at how does this change the footprint of the building? That's not what this includes. I think we need to look at how many elementary schools, and I'm saying elementary on purpose, have a gymnasium of this size with this intended purpose included in them? And why or why not they exist within those buildings?
I guess you'd have to look at how many elementary schools are built right across from my high school that has the need.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's material to the concept, though.
I mean, I think we're building this building and it's right there and high school's right there. You gotta look at that. And with with having different being able to isolate these areas in that building, I think makes that a feasible option.
And the one thing that I would observe as well is there's a whole lot of school buildings in the state of Iowa that are K twelve
Right.
that have kindergarten and seniors all day long in the same building under the complete combination of space. There is no, I taught in one um, K twelve building and you would, you know, go down the hallway, you just went from the high school shop class to elementary art. And uh, that's just a reality that they have to deal with and uh I don't think we would be in that scenario, but if if you want to look at, does this happen in other places? Absolutely.
Carol?
Um, yeah, I I share some of Aaron's concerns, but I I think that there are a couple of different things that we can do to address those. One would be to um, uh, have uh programming for John, that John Klein would have priority on programming throughout the day for whatever they would use, they would want to have for the gym. For instance, we wouldn't have an all-day wrestling meet at uh a a at the John Klein gym. Um, and I think that um your point that we've already talked with Nick, our architect, about having an outside entrance or an entrance from the commons and everything else can be locked off from there, I think is really important. And um, I don't know what the proximity to parking will be to that, but that would be also handy if there was proximity to parking um, near that gym. Um, I also think that we should talk further with Nick about him working with more with the um John Klein staff on some creative, if we're gonna have this huge space, I mean, there's probably some uh creative um design uh uh that he could do what that would really help um facilitate the needs of of the John Klein staff as well as sports that might be there after school and into the evening. So I don't, I don't really share the idea. I mean, I I taught at uh North Wind for many years and it was K twelve and then it was K eight and I uh I I students, there was, there were, I did not see the safety concern. First, I mean, things things can happen, I guess, but um I think that having after school and evening programming in this gym is is not a safety concern with the elementary students.
Looking at pricing, I'm curious about the price per square foot. We're looking at paying to add this additional space. We're looking at about fifteen hundred dollars a square foot to increase the size of this gym. I'm curious if the two point three to three point one million dollars could be better spent equipping this new building, outfitting this new building. There isn't another purpose that could be used for this money or to offset the cost of this building and it's what we're going to end up paying with a thirty-eight million dollar bond. I see the, I see the dilemma of, yep, our existing space isn't quite meeting what we need. However, we also know that Luther is building an expanded gymnasium right now. They have an auxiliary gym. They're talking about building a wrestling facility. It's in the plans to be constructed in September. Are we considering that there are other options versus let's do this, let's spend money versus let's talk to a partner where we can save money? I think there's a lot of question marks in my brain about, yes, this would be good, but does it do all the things that we really want it to do? Or is it just fitting the need that our high school basketball court has two small end lines? The wrestling mats are too close together at the middle school. Those problems to me should be solved at the high school. They should be solved at the middle school. They should not be solved in elementary school. And I understand the 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 landlock issues. But I don't think building something for the purpose of seventeen, eighteen year olds matches the purpose of a four, five, six, seven year old. So if we're gonna consider what we're building, we need to consider what we're building with the age of the students in the building in mind. Building something bigger and better is not open. Building something bigger is not always better. Especially when we're considering the age of the students in that building.
Well, the concern that I think that this is you know, raising is going to be addressed by good design, by good security. If we're worried about security of elementary students, then that's the nightmare scenario that we've been having across the street at John Klein for the last thirty years. If you want to find an insecure facility that is presenting safety concerns that cannot be adequately addressed, that's where I'm moving away from. We're not going to recreate that. This building will be done well enough to address those concerns, and I don't see any scenario where I would rather that we're considering sending our alternative programs, the JV games up to Luther instead of walking across the street from the high school. Um, to me, any suggestion that we're gonna be benefiting from facilities at Luther rather than tennis, which uh, we've been uh doing for years and, you know, obviously swimming, which we don't have a pool, but I don't think they're gonna want us up there playing JV basketball, and I don't think our parents want to drive up to Luther for a JV basketball game uh that could be held right across the street.
Knowing the time being six forty-five in our pre um discussion, I would ask that we table this item for further discussion. Um.
You mean after the closed session? Is that what you're suggesting to continue?
Yes.
I have been keeping an eye on the time. If we're not, and I have not heard a motion yet.
I would make a motion that we approve the uh increase in scope to allow for the construction of a secondary gymnasium as part of the new project.
I would second that.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna move ahead with the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
No.
Okay, motion carries. Um, we are going to move into closed session for our next item. We noted at the beginning of the meeting that um, we would try to hit that closed session at six thirty, so I'd ask anyone in attendance to please exit the room. Um, our closed session will be recorded and we will open the door when we are out of closed session.